Seconded by Sally Anne, all those in favour? That's unanimous. Everybody else is present? Thank you. declarations of interest, members are asked to declare if required any disclosable curinary interests they may have in respect to items on the agenda and any other interests they may have in respect to items on the agenda, you can put them in the book. And members also reminded to inform the clerk of any changes in their register of members' interests. Martin?
I have, are we standing? I don't know, there are all claims.
Yeah, especially if you are standing, yeah, unless you're unable to stand because of disability or mobility concern.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Yep.
I declare an interest in item eight, because it mainly refers to me. And also, I'd like to declare an interest in item number twenty, part one, because as a main component of the clerk, I feel it's personal and prejudicial, so I will be commenting on that, but I won't be voting.
Are you going to be commenting and voting on the eight?
I will, yes, because I support some of the...
Okay, so you're going to vote on that, comment and vote, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Anybody else? Dispensation, yeah, which I think has all been sorted out anyway. Okay?
There's confusion on that, but...
Just moving on. Obviously, we want to have a nice, clean, controlled, non-disruptive meeting, so I'll ask all the members to, when we start working through some of these difficult agenda items, to remain professional at all times, please. Minutes. This is to confirm the minutes of the meeting, the Oakham Town Council on Wednesday, the 8th of June, which was the town council one. Should we do that first?
I have...
Is this on the town council one, on the 8th of June?
Oh, because it's two. Yes, it is the town council. It's for the minute 16516, small claims court. The proposal, as limited, is incorrect. There was no proposal to include the proper officer. Councillor Stubbs proposed, and I've taken this from the clearer one that we voted on on the video, as our chairman said, the proposal on the table is councillor Haley represents the whole council in the mediation and decision-making process. And there was no mention at all at the meeting. My understanding is from discussing with somebody since, that some people felt that my contribution was correct, and after the meeting, the decision was made to send the proper officer, and for that reason, it appeared in the minutes. Well, that's not really the correct way to record activities at the council.
You made a note of that, didn't you, Alison?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else got any comments or observations on that town council?
So, we need to vote that we agree that that...
Well, we've made a note of it, we'll have to go on that next one.
I want to know why I was mentioned as proposing it. So, did somebody second it? Who seconded it?
Sorry, there was no malice against you or anything. Because I was, I was reading that that's what, how it comes across. You were said that it was you proposing it, and that's what's in the minutes, but if you would like to second it, then there's no issue with that. And Vince Howard seconded it.
Small claims court's proposal, it says in the minutes here, it was proposed by councillor Stubbs, seconded by councillor Howard, and agreed with nine votes for one abstaining. The councillor Michael Haley and the proper officer represent the whole council with authority to make a decision during the telephone mediation appointment, so nobody went anywhere, it was all done here. What Martin is saying is that in the actual minute, meeting itself, he's saying it was stated that it was only councillor Michael Haley and the proper officer wasn't, that's mentioned at that stage.
Yeah.
But that was, that was, that was the indication of what was going to be happening, as it happens, at the, I believe councillor Michael Haley confirmed that the proper officer was present when they called the name or whatever.
That is on my paper, Jim.
Oh, right, it's on the paper that was submitted by him. But we'll make a note that from whatever recording evidence that Martin has looked at, he's saying that it wasn't mentioned in the minutes, when it was actually spoken, but it's recorded in the minutes as written. I can't say much more than that, really. So, we've acknowledged what...
You just initialled that, then?
Yeah.
I meant it.
Okay. So, we've acknowledged your observations, so now we'll vote to accept the minutes with those observations. So, proposed by Vince, seconded by Martin, all those in favour? You abstaining, Peter?
I wasn't.
You weren't there, so, so it's Tracy and Peter abstaining because we're present. Everyone else is forward. Okay, so I'll sign those, that way. Thank you very much. And then the next one is the, to confirm the minutes of the extraordinary meeting held on Wednesday, the 22nd of June. Evening, everyone. Look at that, post it now, eh? Anybody got any comments or observations, otherwise I'm looking for somebody to propose. By Vince, seconded by Michael Haley, all those in favour? All those. Everyone accepts Sally Anne, who abstains for sure. Thank you. Try that, that way. Councillors' questions. I don't have my questions on my sheet. Members' reports. Do we see members' reports? I've got three reports, I've got one from Joyce, one from Vince, and one from Adam. Joyce first.
Thank you, chairman, it's not a report, it's just an observation. I'm sure the whole of the council will join with me to wish Oakham and Bloom all best wishes for tomorrow, when the town is judged for the East Midlands in Bloom. A great deal of work has been done in the last few weeks getting ready for the visit. Bloomers have been out and about most nights weeding and edging flower beds, and I'm sure the town as a whole should be grateful for all their hard work. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be there tomorrow as well, so, yeah. Yeah, oh, you will, oh, hey, that's, oh, thanks.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I'd just like to thank everybody so far for the events, supports that we've had. It's been good turnout by the town folk. Please feel free, I've got some posters if you wish to distribute the following concerts. The P-D-W-G, I've got that, well, I'm quite impressed. We're now getting together to sort of look at the events and the budgets for next year, so if anybody has got any sort of ideas that they want to put forward for any events for next year for us to look at, if you could email any member of the team within the next month or so, because we need to put that to council very, very soon, Septemberish. So, anybody that's got any ideas, suggestions, please go through.
Thank you. I've taken not to report on everything I attend as the chairman, because you can read about it in the Brooklyn Times, just to encourage you to do that. I'll mention something that happened today, there was two things, both myself and Michael Haley attended the meeting of Rutland County Council, what I'd describe as a very positive and upbeat meeting, where Terry King and Helen Briggs were keen to keep working with the town council, as we worked through some of the localism issues which are going to start impacting us on in the future, or on us in the future, okay? So, just to make you aware that we've had that meeting, and there's a wish from the county council that we work closer together as we have more regular meetings. The other thing is that, what's come up before is the fitness centre, as I will call it for now, the, whatever you want to call it, defibrillator. The defibrillator, there were some issues over it about being checked on a regular basis, and I've now sorted it out definitively with the organisation that put it in and monitor it. We now do checks once a month, I've got the access to their online registration thing, so each month, and I've done it today, I'll go out there, open the box, make sure it's all in order, and I'll be doing that. What I have been doing is forwarding the emails through to Alison now, so she can print off the checks, so we have a hard copy here, so that anybody can access it and have the log to make sure it's being done. I put it in my works diary on Google to remind me to go and check it each month, so the defibrillator thing is being checked definitely now, and recorded correctly. The recommendation from the Amgen Services is checked weekly, but the minimum is monthly, and because of my work time restraints, I've chosen to do it monthly, so we'll do that. Clerk's report has been handed around, do we need to talk about it? So, people can take the clerk's report and read it, and just clarify that because the clerk has got other career arrangements. Personal issues this evening, that, he's not here, but Alison is doing a phone call. Deputation by the public, there's no press or public present, so we'll skip through that. So, move on to item eight. Item eight is to do with the conduct report. The paper has been brought by myself, not all of it is worded by myself, I have sought some advice with it to get it worded. This is the report as it stands. Anybody want to make any comments or observations? Has it got it on the table? Part from Martin. Martin, I'll let you go first.
Yeah.
Nobody else wants to say anything?
Okay. I've written it down, so I don't waffle, so councillor said don't waffle, or you won't listen to me.
No, which one?
So, I've written it down.
Alan, I mean, is that likely to take, Alan?
No, no, it's, well, I will pause at each thing, in case you wanted to say something, because I'm only responding to something that happened at the weekend, I don't name the person, and a couple of the points.
So, you're going to read out that? That's all, okay, I'll, I accept that as being...
Yes. So, it just basically starts off, because this has been a bit of an unpleasant issue for me, that this weekend I received emails relating to this agenda item, which I consider the nature and the content of those emails to be bullying.
Excuse me, chairman, Martin, can you hold it up so I can lip read as well, rather than...
Sorry.
Sorry, is that all right?
Yeah, I don't want you to miss that, because you've got a vote on something, sorry, Joyce, I forget. Because we're supposed to look at the chair, aren't we, that's him?
Yeah.
But I'm happy to look your way, if you might.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll start, just start that quickly, I said it's been a difficult thing for me, this whole business, but this weekend, I received emails relating to this agenda item, which I consider the nature and content of those emails to be bullying and intimidating. Referring to councillor Lowe's report, which is the green paper that you have in front of you, I moved sanction number one. If Oakham Town Council decide to agree with this sanction proposal, I would not respond unless the letter acknowledged the investigators and monitoring officers' findings, that I react to poor conduct of others. I acknowledge and accept two wrongs don't make a right, just like councillor Lowe, I'm human too. Moving on to sanction two. If the council does accept this recommendation made by our chairman, I request a decision notice and the Wilkin Chapman report are published in full alongside any letter that the council consider, may consider they want to publish in various places. Moving on to sanction number four, this is the most confusing part of the report. The monitoring officer's recommendation is very clearly written, and I find it difficult, as so do many other people, to understand why clarification was needed, apart from the fact that the Oakham Town Partnership would like to see my appointment revoked from their outside body. I am not sure why councillor Lowe is asking members to consider this sanction, when his own report highlights further on in that section, that current standing orders do not permit the removal of any member from committees or outside bodies. Councillor Lowe suggests this standing order could be reviewed. If that is required, a paper should be produced for a later meeting. I do not believe the council should consider changing its standing orders to suit the requirements of an outside body. And councillor Lowe, while we're on that subject, pointed out that our standing orders don't permit the removal from outside bodies, so I question why did the council breach its own standing orders by forcing my removal as a trustee of Victoria Hall? And my last comment is on sanction number five. I don't disagree with training. I think that training, or the lack of training, has been part of my problem, part of this council's problem. There hasn't been training, proper training, for years at this council, and, but if we do arrange training, which is mentioned later, I'm sorry to say, it's not the job of the staffing committee. People, without mentioning names, who don't communicate with me, don't want to talk to me, it's laid down very clearly in one of our policies, and probably a standing order, that it's the responsibility of the clerk and the chairman to organise our training. So, that's what I would hope, that if you do seek training for all of us, including our staff, that it's done through our new clerk, or our local clerk, I can't say you at the moment, with the assistance of the chairman of the council, and I think training is very important, if it's taken up.
Okay, that's...
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
No, thank you, Martin, thank you for keeping it well-controlled as well. Just to clarify, under our code of conduct complaint, code of conduct D, it says, oh, eight, it's code of conduct eight, D, under notification by the monitoring officer at Rutland County Council, that a councillor has breached the council's code of conduct, the council shall consider what, if any, action to take against him, such action excludes disqualification or suspension from office, it says here? Yeah?
Excludes that, but otherwise it's...
Otherwise it's...
Open.
Yeah. So, how would you interpret that, then?
What, the chair, shall I?
Yeah, please, do it. Peter. If you're either to stay seated, you can remain seated.
That's okay. We looked at this because we're proposing a meeting to go through an annual review, which is what we should do. The ones in dark print are sacrosancts, they're models from nulk, and that is that precise wording that you've read over it, so I do think it does give us the opportunity to do what we want, apart from the suspension or scolding a member from doing their due...
Okay, as a councillor?
Yes, as a councillor.
Okay.
Michael Haley, you did. Just chose one of the points that Martin made. The Victoria Hall trustees, of which I am one, the secretary confirmed that the trustees would not accept Martin as a trustee, so it wasn't this council removing Martin from that role, it was the Victoria trustees who made the decision not to. Now, that was coming from the secretary, it's all right.
Can I just respond briefly?
Yeah, quickly, yeah.
That's incorrect, not from, I'm going to go to Michael, but the constitution is the same as Oakham Town Partnership, it's a four-way split between Rutland County Council and Oakham Town Council, and it says we have the right to appoint.
Okay.
And I'm not going to fight Victoria Hall, because that's history now, but they are wrong in what they did.
From when we've had clarification come through from Debbie Mogg, and we did seek clarification, because there was some confusion whether you were staying on working groups, such action excludes disqualification or suspension from office. Office is councillor, we cannot stop a councillor from being a councillor, there's only certain things to do that, so we're not discussing that. If the council agrees to accept the green paper, with the understanding as was outlined in Debbie Mogg's emails to us, that what her interpretation should have meant was that councillor could be removed from working groups, committees, and outside bodies, that is in theory what the council would be working on. Do you want to come back on that, Martin?
Yeah, because you all have in front of you, it's a legal document, which is an official decision notice, and on page six, I think it is point four, it doesn't say anything about outside bodies. If Mrs Mogg wasn't consulted, you would be reading that as is what it says there, and that's a legal document which has been published. Somebody went to her and obviously said, ah, that we need to get rid of him off of that outside body, and she said, that's what I mean. Well, no, if this was in court, that wouldn't hold up. You can't sentence somebody and then just say, well, actually, I meant that a few weeks later. That is the decision notice, that is a legal decision notice, and that line does not mention removal, doesn't mention outside bodies, so it can't be interpreted as any other way. If she wanted to issue a new notice, she may have been able to do that, but she hasn't done that, she says, that is how I meant it to be. Now, that won't stand up in court.
We've got it, we've started repeating stuff like that. Right, Michael, did you want to add anything to that?
No.
Right, the thing is, is that I would say there's two options here, the council can do one of two things, it either accepts the green paper where Martin is removed from working groups, outside bodies, and committees, or it agrees to accept the original report as detailed by Debbie Mogg without the clarification. Michael?
I proposed the green paper.
Right, so councillor Haley has proposed that we go with the green paper's interpretation, seconded by...
Chairman, can I ask for each thing to be done individually, as it's, they are quite important, different things.
There's a proposal, let's see if there's, well, there's a proposal on the table that we accept the green paper, there you are. Seconded by councillor Stubbs, all those in favour that we go with the green paper? One, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, all those against? Councillor Brooks is against, all those abstaining? Sally Anne's abstaining, so that is carried, so that's the findings of the council. So, that's, we'll move on, we're going to go on to that.
Can I just, for clarification, you haven't really decided what you're going to do, that's the thing, there's been no, you just say accept the paper, the paper doesn't actually give proper...
We've accepted the recommendation of the council with the way that we're doing it.
So, what is the recommendation, what are you going to do?
I'm not going to go over the paper again now, we will discuss it possibly, let's take the opportunity where we discuss this in a meeting at a later date, shall we?
Well, I would, I would have liked it out of the way, because also, you haven't put a review date...
So, that's the conduct report out of the way, I'm now going to go on to item nine. Now, because Jasmine isn't here, and because she was on the board for work on this, Sally Anne, do you want to defer this?
I was going to ask a question with the...
Propose that we defer, again, item nine. Do we, well, can you come to the planning and parks? When's the date that we're done on this?
Mark and I?
Yeah, go on, shoot, you go first.
Jasmine phoned me earlier, I'll be, I'll apologize.
All right.
And I said to her what I was going to say this evening, I've gone through these papers twice, and they don't, they, they mean very little to me, because I haven't got the skillset to really interpret it. And I asked her as a member of the working group, which of the three would she recommend as best value, and she asked me to pass on to the council that she would recommend Welling.
So, Welling?
Welling.
Okay, well, that's...
I didn't ask her to clarify, because I have to say it's beyond my capability to...
Well, based on that?
Be great.
Based on that, Michael, in her actions, so you're proposing that in her...
I'd propose, yeah, I'd have a nod.
Yeah, Michael, Elliot first.
It seemed to me significant that only one of the three mentioned WordPress as the platform for installing the special type of website, and that's the most expensive one. My attempt to give some advice on this subject forthcoming, says back to me that WordPress is easily the most used, easily the most flexible, easily the most able to join other things into, which obviously flies in the face of that recommendation, so I would have liked a bit more detail, an explanation for that raw information I'm just putting in there, I'm not, I'm not an expert on this tool, but I can see, having had to manage situations where software and the degree to which it does fit in with other programs, compatibility is important, maybe it's important here, I don't know.
Okay, interesting. Martin, you, you're a bit of a whiskey on this one.
Yeah, well, I've tried to point things out before, I'll try again. This council pays Millennium for a website, which is probably actually better than what we're using at the moment, which is the issue why this has come up, because either we move to a bigger company who pay more money for it. We pay Millennium to host a website which hasn't been used since 2013. Every time the link fails on that, which we pay to redirect each year, the website comes up and instantly Google search it, and all the spider things, as they call it, and that pick out every page, and like bingo, you know, the Google search page and probably other search pages shows everything relevant to Oakham Town Council's, in there in my 2013 agendas, whatever, or whatever. Currently, we have a website with Leicestershire, Harishes Councils, which is very expensive, and we get one line followed by my blog, and people don't like that, but we have the facility in place to have a perfectly good website that could be tuned up to bring it to the standard and perhaps even better than what we already have, so I would totally object to be paying any more money for new sites when we are currently paid and have a site which is in hiding, you could say it's been archived, and that's all, I would say, is that could we not look, could we not look at that and find out what the possibilities are of getting that site up and running, because we only need, which is like upping it in a way, is that we're using social media in a very good way, the homepage only needs to look pretty and linked to our social media sites, and it's got all the things to upload, the data storage and everything is already there, it's got many years of this council's archive, which are not available on the current website.
Okay. I'm aware that we've got a proposal on the table, I noticed that this paper, we have to make a decision by September 1st.
That's only because that one is going to close.
Yes, I know that. I mean, it could say...
Can I just say something?
Sure.
Millennium, we tried to get in touch with several times.
Come, come.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Millennium, we did try to contact regarding setting up and sorting out the website, but they never answered the phone. I mean, I don't know whether you have any direct lines, but we've had trouble getting in touch with Millennium, and that's why they've not given us a proposal. Going back to what Michael said, although thecreativestore.com is the most expensive one, he is local, he will come out at any moment and help us with anything that needs sorting out, and it is only an estimated cost, it's not, it will be two and a half round. Until he gets down and sorts it out, he doesn't know the exact amount, so it could be a lot cheaper.
Okay. Right, I'm going to go back, Michael put a proposal that we go with Welling, is that correct? Does anybody want to second that? Bear in mind what you just said, Sally Anne, I don't know if you wanted to second what you said there.
Not Welling, no.
No, right.
Sorry.
Okay, well, that, it looks like it's going to fall, I would say that there's still some clarity needed on this, and I, Peter.
Yes, chairman, we've got a parks meeting in two weeks' time.
Yes.
Can we not defer until then? Two weeks, I'm sure it is within the schedule, isn't it?
Well, because of the expenditure, in theory, it's not parks and planning, however, I don't want to turn it into a council meeting, what we could do is we could defer it to that evening where we have a mini, we could call an emergency council meeting beforehand, spend half an hour on this before that, and then go into planning and parks. Yeah? Because I want to make an extraordinary meeting, because that way I want to make sure that planning and parks retains its own identity.
Yes.
So, propose that we defer it, sorry, Michael, propose your, so Michael's motion fell, from the chair, propose that we defer it to the night of the planning and parks, and can the clerk, assistant clerk, put an extraordinary meeting in process for bringing this one paper back, and make the working group aware, that would be Jasmine and Sally Anne. Now, possibly, if needs be, take advice, you know, let's try and down down Millennium, at the end of the day, if they're not cooperating or not getting in touch, then they're losing out. So, that's a proposal that's deferred, seconded by the clerk.
No, I was just going to ask a question.
Yeah.
Okay. Sally Anne just said that creative store is local, how local? Because...
Oakham Enterprise, he is. Sorry. The Oakham Enterprise.
Actual.
Actual.
That's all I'm needing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's proposed by Adam, seconded by Peter Ryan, all those in favour, it's deferred. You abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
And Michael's abstaining, so everybody, yes, Michael's abstained. Did you want a minoting? No? If anybody wants their name minoting in the future, can they say clearly that they want it minoting, otherwise I'll now assume they don't. Do, do, do. Shall we look to? Oakham Community Centre, this is to... Open Community Centre, this is to item 10. Who's carrying this one forward? Michael, thank you.
I'll take any questions.
Any question, do you not want to say any more, now just questions then. Go around the table, who's first, Martin?
Go back, go on then, yeah.
Yeah? No, I think you first. No, you, no, it's you.
No, well, I will say it again because it was one of the first things when I came back to this council that I supported in this rather ironically called Open Community Centre and I'm quite disappointed that the residents of Oakham are paying for it this year, empty. And I personally believe that we should be in the situation of putting it on the market if we're not going to use it for community and leasing it for a period of time. I'm told that this organisation that's approached us by the Rutland County councillor who put them in touch with us are not poor, so I'm also concerned about there's not, I think I'm reading it correct, that they're not going to be getting a peppercorn rent. But I think they have the money and the funding to actually buy it on leasehold, which then gives the council enough money to do something which can be community orientated and that would be based on what has happened in Ketan with their new pavilion, it cost them £62,000. We could knock the shelter down and cut close, which looks ugly, and have a live community pavilion for our events from the income of leasing out this property. And we have a market value in a recent survey report which we had once before and it's interesting that it's gone up by £2,000. So I would not be happy if this organisation were allowed it less than the market value. But I think we have a duty that this should actually be, even if we are renting for tenants, we shouldn't just take it on first come, first served, recommended by whoever. I'm not saying there was anything wrong by these people being told, because that's what, we can go out and find people, but we should be putting it out there and getting the best return for the residents, particularly as they're paying £9,000 for it this year.
Okay, if you really may ask anything to say, or is looking for Michael to derive some kind of a proposal for this? Joyce, sorry, yeah?
I have difficulty in what, in accepting this because somewhere in all this paperwork, it said that the value valuation report is £15,000 a year, is that right?
Yes.
Have I got that right?
Yeah.
We're paying £15,000 here.
Yes, I know.
We're not making any money on this building, we should be making more money than we are looking at. I mean, this is not a charity. I'm sorry, for once, I have to agree with councillor Brooks on this one. It's a community project that I would approve.
Yes, Michael Hayley's response.
The working group has worked hard, we're trying to get the building occupied. Martin has alluded to that, no breaks, nothing as much has happened. We have negotiated with three separate bodies, including this body, and it's got nothing to do with the county council. This is an independent-
I won't name this, but you told me this yesterday.
Don't disrupt, please.
This is an independent company. We've had two other groups have expressed interest, we've both pulled away. In our experience, people aren't queuing up to take on the building. We've had an evaluation report. It gives a number of different prices for different buildings, but at the end of the day, the building, as Martin quite rightly says, at the moment is sitting there empty and costing us money. Its actual worth, as far as a lease is concerned, is exactly what somebody else is prepared to pay for it. It doesn't really matter, the valuation is to give an indication of what the surveyor feels, feels its market value is. In reality, as with anything and everything, its actual value is what someone else will pay. And at the moment, these are the only people who have expressed an interest in carrying this forward. What our recommendation is, is that we, that the working group is allowed to continue negotiating with them. The working group accepts, it does not have delegated powers to enter into a contract with them, but simply negotiate with them to see what they are prepared, or the maximum they are prepared to offer, no more, no less, thank you.
Thank you, treasure.
I want to say two things, can I come back to councillor Brooks? Perhaps you should go back to the Rutland County councillor to suggest that they may behave and conduct themselves in a more professional way. You should not be discussing the account or the assumption of the account with third bodies, I think that's inappropriate and unprofessional. And going back to Michael's point, I think we need to learn a lesson from Rutland County council in the fact that they have the land which is now currently being built on by Aldi that they overpriced and sat empty for a long, long time. We could, going back to Michael, we've got an intensive party and therefore we should be working with them. The fact that it's remained empty, nobody has come forward and any requests to move into that building, so I think we need to learn from some of the lessons.
Okay, Peter, Mark, help.
Yes, thank you, chairman, yes. I've had some experience on Rutland County council with buildings being empty and hope value and all sorts of things and I think we need to be realistic. We've got a good potential customer here. The blurb seems to talk about a 25-year lease, which I think would be good. But what I would ask, I would support the recommendations, but in the discussions and the debate with the ARC, that the working group bear in mind our comments. You know, we don't want to roll over and give it away cheaply, you know, we want something that's realistic.
Okay. Well, Martin, you can write down, go on, it might not-
Yeah, as Martin said, you're quite right, that the working group will be working in the interest of the council. We would try to negotiate as high as they will go.
Okay, closing comments from Martin, we've all looked at you for a proposal. Martin, do you want to add anything about the general item?
Yeah, we've had it handed around that nobody's come forward, but actually, and I've said it at another meeting, this council hasn't even advertised the fact it was available. They went to the press and said it was a community centre.
Okay, right, then, the papers on the table, I think everyone's just-
Can I just say? I think this has been a very good debate and that's what debate's all about. It's not about emails, it's about debating around this table and I've changed my mind, thank you.
Thank you. Michael, did you want to propose about anything on your paper?
Yes, I proposed a recommendation as laid down.
Okay, that's seconded by councillor Stubbs. All those in favour? Anybody against? Anybody abstaining?
I'm against, I was waiting for the council to endorse.
Right, so one against.
Could we not have a proposal to unname it because this council did officially name it Open Community Centre?
No, I'm not worried about the name of it, it's immaterial.
But it does make us look rather dark.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Eleven. Transfer of community lighting. Did the report authors want to say anything first on this, if not everybody having read the paper? There's nothing further to add, is there? If there's any questions, anybody wants to ask? So, proposal by Michael, if you can go forward.
I need to know what the proposal is.
The proposal says the council considers this proposal and the clerk or his absence, the acting clerk, informs RCC of the decision. What is the decision?
I'm proposing, I'm going to propose reluctantly that we accept it because really we're between a rock and a hard place on this. If we turn it down, RCC have the option, which they've stated, that the community lighting may be left unmaintained and allowed to progressively fail, or it may be switched off. If they did that, they, I think they've been quite clear, it was Oakham Town council's fault that there's no community lighting in the winter, blah, blah, blah. So I think they're twisting our arm, but I really don't think that they can put, they will put forward a very good case which won't do us any good and it certainly won't be in the interest of the community if you only street lighting, even though there are affairs and bypass. So reluctantly, my proposal is that we go with it.
Can I just-
Add in there before, yeah?
It's not over negative, what I'm asking is obviously you're going to carry on as a working group, I assume, you were with this. If we're going to go into this, we know technology improves and I'm reading that this is like year on year. I think that there should be like something else that we were allowed to see today. There should be a review date because we could end up paying this thousands of pounds and actually it would cost a lot less in 30 years' time.
Let me just clarify, we are paying for the, or the proposal is that we pay for the unmeted electrical energy to operate the community lighting and as their part of the deal is that all the existing lighting will be replaced, is being replaced.
But it's this open review date.
In, it was on the previous paper, Martin, in August, they will be replacing existing lighting with LED.
Yeah, I know that, I fully understand that, but what I'm saying is I'm talking about the paragraph that talks about when we start and then it's like the issues we've had over the cemetery and things, this is which they said they wouldn't do. This is just left in that we pay every January thereafter. So all I'm asking is that this should be reviewed at a certain stage in case there is some major change.
Like an opt-out, or can we get notice that we don't want to pay for it? Or I think that we can't, because I think once we sign up to it, one of the things is historically, when, I think it was 1974, when the council originally formed, Rutland County council has pushed out lighting to a lot of the parishes and a lot of the parishes currently pay. And to put a positive spin on this, RCC, yes, they are putting the pressure on us a little bit, but all they want to do is make sure that Oakham Town council, along with the other parishes, pay their fair share of the responsibility for looking after their parish. We get this money from the parish precept or from the precept of our people and they want to make sure that we're using it to the benefit and lighting is one of those benefits. And to be fair to Rutland County council, they have got to reduce their costs by millions of pounds, £4 million, I don't want to say that, but yeah, £4 million, £4.2 if you like. And this is one of the ways they're having to do it and as a localism element, what parish councils know about, that is why they're sort of saying, come on, you pick up some of the slack. So proposal by Michael, another comment by Michael Elliot.
I was just going to ask, can I be clear, the 9380 here, that is the new cost to the council, over and above what it contributes at the moment? Or does it not contribute anything?
At the moment, we contribute nothing.
Zero.
So this will be an incremental cost in addition to the budget.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, Peter? I know we've got your proposal on the table.
Yes, I think I'm right in thinking that many parishes already pay the full cost and I think Uppingham do, because I know when we did an audit, we found we were also paying for Belton. But somehow the lecturist board had connected this up, I meant to say, Belton and Wardley. But I agree with the councillor's sentiment. I think the danger is this localism is used as a lever to move costs to us. But as a major market town, we're going to be the ones who hit hardest. So I think, as I said earlier, we need to be robust in dealing with this. A bit worried about unmeted and estimates and so forth. There's a risk here, you know, we could get any bill. Have we any control, can we, no, we don't particularly want to do it, but can we turn some of the lights off if we want to reduce cost? Can we turn them off at night? Is there any flexibility?
The, well, first of all, the lighting will change to LED and the energy consumption is very low, the number of those will be dimmed after midnight. The energy cost of LED compared to ordinary lamps is very, very small, which is why that figure is quite small. The unmeted energy supplies for street lighting started about 1932, 33, I believe, about that time, but a formula is used for the number of hours the light is on for the lamp power, the control gear losses. So it's not metered at all, so it's on our national formula. RCC buy their energy at a fixed annual rate, they are part of, I believe, a government procurement agency which does get energy at very attractive prices. But we have to bear in mind that energy now is a commodity, it's trade on a futures market. So the price, they do not know much in advance of what they'll be paying for the next year. What they do know is they'll pay considerably less than you or I would pay because of the buying power of the government consortium. So the figure they've given us, 9380, that could, if energy prices went down, that could go down, if energy prices go up, it would go up. That's out of their control, out of our control. That is a risk which they carry, will have to carry and everybody else will be carrying.
I've got Vince who wants to say something, so I'll give Vince and then just stop.
Just, just one thing, your proposal, Michael, could we put a caveat on that that we have a total cost capping of £10,000? It should exceed £10,000, then it's going to come back to council. That safeguards the council for a bill in excess of £9,380. So we accept the proposal in full, however, with a caveat to say that we cap. Because then they've got to reapply and it safeguards our budget.
I don't think that's realistic inasmuch as childish deal, but they are spending a lot of capital on operating the lighting.
We're only paying for the lighting charge.
We're only paying for the maintenance, we're not paying for the operator.
And the energy, right.
We're only paying for the energy and that's not part of the bill for everyone else.
So initially, I don't think Michael would keep the agenda on with the caveat, but let's see what Stan has to add.
Purity is into this, I've listened very carefully. And my summing up really is that I feel we have no option but accept. And I'll be prepared to second the proposal.
Okay, before we accept that second, I'll come out to Michael Elliot.
It is attractive to be able to review it after one year or twenty, not every year. I think it will automatically be an idea to be able to look at it and see how it's going. And can we find out actually how many of the villages in Rutland do pay that? You know, what is the perspective on this? It's certainly a high percentage of that.
We are one of the, for whatever reason, we are one of the very few.
We got missed.
The villages pay, I've been paying for most of, not all of them apparently, but most of them.
When this actually came up to me on the same day and out of the two areas that were mentioned, in actual fact, there was only cost is more in Oakham that were actually mentioned as people that weren't paying into this sort of thing, I believe.
If you look on the spreadsheet, on the paper, if you look at the spreadsheet online, then you can actually see all of the data, every single number in the county.
And bearing in mind that some of the smaller parishes probably won't have community lighting because they're just mainstreaming, so it comes in the highways, which is different again, so Joyce?
Can we persuade the lecturist board to pay for, along with, sorry, I think, pay for, along with Belton? Joyce?
It's just to say, I know that Market Overton is a small village, but I remember headlines in the local press when they put LEDs all through their village and how much their their cost had gone down. They are a prime example about taking over their lighting system. It's the same as, I have to say, lighting and cemetery. We are, you're right, we are one of the few parishes that don't pay to our energy costs and we're the only parish who don't look after our own cemetery. our own cemetery.
One of the, I'm coming to you in a minute, Martin, I think that maybe one of the caveats is that if we agree to this, and I'm a like minded as Michael Haley here, is that, um, if we do agree, it's on the understanding that they continue with, they don't, they they don't stop changing lights for LED. They've said that they're doing it, and we don't want to start paying this, and all of a sudden then stop. So the condition is that we will do it, that they keep paying, changing the lights and upgrading them, and if they stop, as per that draw, if they stop, then in theory, they're breaching the agreement.
Yes.
And that will then give us, of course, a redress. Every time I say somebody likes that happens. Uh, Martin, did you want to add anything to this? Because I'm conscious of the agenda.
I was similarly going to say that sort of thing, and that was what I was trying to put about reviewing this, because I know that's bigger than estimate, but a lot of places are now getting to the point, and you'll see them in Rutland, mainly on signs at the moment, where they're not actually costing anything to run because of the LEDs using solar. So my thing would be that to try and get this cost, because known estimates, I think that's going to be bigger, especially at the moment with the fact that there isn't many LED lighting. And that is my concern, that it's not that we don't pay them. When I was asking to review, not even a year, it's sort of like five years, saying, well, you haven't done this, and you're asking for this amount of money, and that's just to stop a an inherent problem, is that the right word, for a future council?
Okay, yeah, we don't want to lumber anybody in future.
And I I wouldn't be happy on estimates.
So the proposal that the band we got is that we accept it, but we've written in a proviso that if they stop replacing or upgrading the lightings, then we have, of course, a redress.
So it is, we say it is subject to replacing the lights within the programme, it's not that one.
Yes, yes.
And and get them to detail that thing.
Yes, that would be, so that would be Michael's new proposal. You'd prefer accepting that, Vince? All those in favour of that? Martin?
I abstain.
You abstain. Everybody's in favour, Martin is abstaining. Uh, item, so that's kind of, okay, uh, item twelve is the working group to seeing group strategy assurance. Is this for decisions or for just an advisory? Just just for information, isn't it? So any, just a note, anybody got any observations? This is, this is part of these, these strategy group documents, or these working group strategy documents that Michael Haley and other people have been using, and just to keep people aware of how they're getting on with things, so the councillors can't say that they've not been informed how working groups are developing, okay? And how they're getting on. So if there's no comments or observations, we will acknowledge that. I don't think we need to vote on it, just make a note with them. Oh, please, yeah.
The comment I'd like to make is how well I think the speed is carrying. They have a very good chairperson, and they seem to be doing a lot of work at the same time. If you make a note of that, people. That's it, everyone.
You've been in the council this time, right? Please, yeah, just to tell us when you're planning. Theresa, Theresa Cameron? All right, well, please, if you're bothering me, please. Sorry to see you there, Margot.
But I was pleased to see her, because she's almost human when she gave her speech.
It's cool the way they switch cars.
Um, I think we did, right, so we we've acknowledged, we we can carry on one last, just get to that. Uh, item thirteen then is the planning subcommittee. We need to appoint one member to the planning subcommittee.
Just for the future.
Yes.
Mind what you're doing now, but you cannot have a council meeting without a clerk present.
No, no, well, she's sort of hard.
Yeah, I know. My reason for saying that is that when councillors are accused of having a meeting, a council meeting, um, which sometimes they are, that can only be done if there is a clerk.
All right, I think, there we go. That's fine. Who was it? Mr.?
The golf, uh, golf, golf coast, it's been falling down in Princess Avenue.
Falling down?
Falling down. It's not hurt anybody, but some children just running in, adults driving past, just having a look to see if it's.
All right.
You'll have to pull them out, just.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, okay, we'll have a look. Uh, right, item thirteen, planning subcommittee to appoint one member to the planning subcommittee. Anybody want to go on the planning subcommittee?
I propose councillor Stubbs, please.
Yeah, are you happy for that, Stan?
No.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yes, right, propose. By Vince, how the councillor Stubbs goes on to the planning sub, seconded by, uh, Michael Haley. All those in favour? Uh, mine?
I abstain.
Abstaining? So that's carried then? Congratulations, Stan.
Again.
Item fourteen is the payment improvement to authorize the following payment. This is where Planscape were awarded the contract, and it's just an invoice over X amount, so invoice one zero nine hundred for floor display. So somebody to propose that we can pay this, proposed by, uh, Michael Elliot, seconded by Michael Haley, all those in favour? Martin, are you in?
Uh, I'm abstaining.
Abstaining? Okay, so everybody was in favour except for Michael abstaining. Um, thank you. Item fifteen, plenty of comments if you abstain them. Um, item fifteen, schedule of payments. The planning scheme to decide whether to approve the schedule of payments from June the first to June the thirtieth. Any comments or observations? Joyce?
Uh, fifty three, planting and tree surgery.
Gates's nursery.
Gates's nursery, eighty two pounds.
Yeah.
Where was that for?
I don't know.
That was what you went, do you go?
Was that noises?
Yeah.
That is trees only because.
I've heard that.
Uh.
We've lost this.
Oh, no, that's just the, that's.
Uh, planting was done by councillor Howard and my husband.
I I think what it is, is on the system that we use, the heading is, heading is code. That's the code.
No, I just want to make a point that sometimes councillors round this table do all sorts of work free of charge of the town. That's the only reason I brought it up.
Any other comments or observations, Martin?
Yes, um, item number forty nine, can I have an explanation? It's the first time I've seen expenses test go.
Uh, expenses test before we have to raise this before.
No, this is the time to raise it. We're told not to, it's, we can't change it pre-meeting, so we have to raise.
Okay.
Water?
Uh, I think it was for, uh, yeah, I I believe.
Oh, that was, yeah, it was, Michael, that one, yeah.
Yeah.
What was that for?
It's based for the office teas and coffees.
All right, no problem.
Yeah, what it is, is that they, I think, I think you've raised the point before that, um, that they get, you know, I mean, they buy water for the table and all that sort of stuff, and it comes from somewhere. Uh, Michael, it would be helpful, though, if these points are raised to the class before meetings, because that way they can actually look at it, because looking at these, they probably wouldn't know it, don't they?
As long as I support, I would support what Mike was saying, it's not fair to raise these points in a meeting, because a clerk can't expect to have all this information, and any concerns that should be raised before.
It's never been, it's never been a problem before, Chair, and this is the way it's always been done.
Okay, right, yeah, right, okay. Well, that's what it was, um, that's what it's for, so that's answered. So thank you very much for raising it.
Yes, and and the other issue is, once again, we've paid, uh, a person who doesn't like to be mentioned, although they're on public documents, and they've not had the proper payroll deductions. We're not supposed to employ self-employed people, and that's on item number sixty six.
Okay, yeah, I think we've, we've taken advice on this, and that has all been resolved, and you've been advised of that in email as well.
I haven't.
Yes, you would, you advised an email on the ninth of June on how we were handling the situation with the part-time administration. Okay, we didn't see, you've got it, we'll get it forwarded on to you. Thank you.
And another point, um, we keep paying for, with deep leisure, to inspect our player area. Um, there is a report produced, but it never comes to parks and planning, and there are a number of issues on that report which, um, have what they class, I think it's an amber level, and I wouldn't want to see some of these things becoming red alert. I don't see the point, as we're trying to move on and change.
What, what are you talking about?
Yes, right, which we are.
No, but it's an opportunity to say we're paying for something, and it's just sitting there, and no action is being taken on it. And when it should come to parks and planning for us to consider the work that's required.
Yeah, okay.
It's it's never been attached, has it?
No, no.
It did many years ago.
Thank you, let's not have a discussion over it.
I propose we agree on that, please.
Proposal by Vince, we agree on that, seconded by councillor Lucas, all those in favour? Martin, in or out, or?
I'm out, hundred percent.
Are you against or abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, everybody's in, mine's up there. Uh, sixteen is the statement of the council. To approve the statement of the council, you can approve mine.
Look, I have a concern. And it's, 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 it's a concern on the basis of how much money the council is holding in the HSBC account. I would have thought by now, we would have had been in a sort of more stable position to actually sort that properly, to have three hundred thousand pounds plus in one bank is too risky and unacceptable. And when I would like to propose to safeguard some of that money.
You can't do that on this, no, you can't.
It's a finance, you know, a member can make a proposal at any time, and my proposal, they don't have to second it, but my proposal is that the clerk is given the authority to transfer a sum of money to the Cambridge Building Society. It's too much risk.
So, right, councillor Brooks has proposed that the clerk transfer a sum of money.
Well, we've got to decide what amount, because I don't know. That's what my proposal is, but I don't know what we're allowed to put in there, so I'm, I'm, if I say a hundred thousand pounds, that at least gives us a a safeguard, I mean, because the clerk can't transfer it without our consent.
Okay, all right, so councillor Brooks has proposed we transfer a hundred thousand pounds from the account to the Cambridge.
No.
Any, anybody from finance want to comment on that?
Well, I, please do, perhaps comment on, we've been through a period of seven or eight weeks of, um, extraordinary activity with a clerk standing in and doing their best at fulfilling all the duties of the clerk in that period. We undertook at a previous meeting, two months ago probably, in response to councillor Iron raising the question of where these, where the council's money is, and in an ordinary world, by now, we've come forward with some proposals. There simply hasn't been time in this period to do the necessary research properly. I would, as far as Cambridge is concerned, um, we may or may not have a situation where we can draw it off more or less easily than we want to. So actually, the repository does have to be worked from the point of view of transfer in and out. So th- these aren't excuses, these are reasons why we have not as expeditiously worked, we've got on to look, and coming back to council, where the council's money should be as risky as possible, but paying interest.
Okay, uh, yeah.
Yes, just a quick comment. Am I not right in thinking, if we've got sixty in the Cambridge, and we've put a hundred in, it'd be a hundred and sixty, simple arithmetic, but isn't the, um, financial limits?
Seventy?
Seventy five.
Yeah.
It was eighty five, I think, no, seventy five.
So it's a risk.
Really, we want to, no fox more than seventy five.
Um, one of the issues which our clerk who's off, actually told the members here, we are not, as a council, protected by those things. So if these banks went, we'd have nothing. We're not protected as a council under the financial regulations. So that's why the Citizens Advice Bureau has twenty one bank accounts for their two hundred odd thousand pounds, because those, these types of organisations are not protected. That's for the general public. That's Michael Stur.
Uh, I'm gonna come back to, I've got a little selection to go to now. I think Michael, if, uh, so I can Michael Haley, that's up to Peter. Maybe that this is what Michael's going to lose, the clerk also said, did he not, that, um, the numbers of repositories for local council money is very restricted, and that is part of what we have got to get back and look at. So that differentiates, I think, from the example you just given.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, Michael, thank you, Michael Haley.
That's, that is what I was going to say. I was also going to say that HSBC is a large international banking organisation with assets in multi billions of pounds. The amount we've got is a very small change. I think the risk of HSBC going under is is very low. Cambridge Building Society, again, no risk, but it is a small build, national building society, which doesn't sort of stand up against HSBC, so I don't think now is near wrong too much, but HSC, HSBC going belly up in that.
Okay, Peter?
Well, just a quick comment. I thought small local authorities did have the seventy five thousand protection, but maybe Oakham's a bit too big, and perhaps we need to worry about that.
I I would suggest that the agenda item actually states, decide whether to approve the statement of the council, as opposed to where to put our money, leave it to matter for the finance committee or funds working group to examine. Given the comments around the table, hopefully, they will be conscious of that, and I appreciate the fact that we've already put in a huge amount of work, and I acknowledge councillor Elliot's comments, that it's been a difficult couple of months, that I have not been taken off the ball, but I've been focusing on the priority work. Vince?
And I propose we accept the statement of the council.
You can, I'll second that. All those in favour? Martin, you afford against abstaining? Okay. Uh, Tracy's paper, I, uh, item seventeen, to consider a report to make decisions appropriate. Did you want to add anything to this?
Yeah, I'm just kind of, sorry, I've had to come up and visit this, um, after really meeting with Alison, we went through the contracts, um, and I don't really want to sort of dwell on, it's the first one, it's had to be very explicit with this, because going through the contracts, there wasn't a consistency with how things are advertised.
No.
So this really is about having a process where, all all the things that we want to contract out, start before the start date, goes out to advertise, advertise in six months prior.
Okay.
And we've agreed what those mechanisms are.
Okay.
Because we did find that they were ad hoc, some were advertising, some weren't, some were just on the noted board. I think we've got to have a, a process.
We do, yeah. And so that's why your recommendation is that we tend to.
That was why that six months takes into consideration that that part, so, and it's about expressions of interest. So basically, the end, the the advert would be quite basic. We have got a contract coming up, it starts here, it ends there, are you interested? When we then receive interest, that's where we send out more detail about what the expectation is, what the cost envelope is, you can put it in, or you might choose not, and that comes to council, whether or how you choose to do that. Um, and then, obviously, we've all got the tenders back in, and then we've already discussed the scoring system that was, that was approved at, uh, another council meeting. And then, um, it should be really awarded with, with a minimum of a two week cooling off period. Um, and also, I was suggesting that cooling off period, after that cooling off period, that there is, um, uh, all contracts should be signed at least two weeks before.
Yeah.
Again, because I did find evidence that some were signed two months after the contract. Now, that does pose some significant issues. If something happened within that timeframe, there's nothing legally binding us to that, that, um, company if something was to go wrong. And then finally, um, to, um, periodically review the contracts and see if they are.
Yeah, unless we do like, unless we'd be like checking grass, putting.
It is, but it's also things, but but also, I hate to say, I I'm gonna, gonna say it, but, um, the A cleaning was a real example of this in terms of, it quite clearly states in my contract what they will supply, all sundries.
Yeah.
And actually going through and discussing with Alison, actually, we're paying for those on top of the contract. So there may be some a a arrangement that we are not aware of. So I think we have to hold them to their contract as it is. Um, and just finally, my recommendation is that, having gone through it, the two contracts that, um, are coming door, I mean, they really stopped quickly, we're talking September and October, we haven't got enough time to implement this process. So I was suggesting that they just get suspended for six months and six months only, so that from the first of September, we can embed this into it. And that's me. I was just to give you some context as to why I put it back, really. And that's me, I was just to give you some context as to why I've planted that really.
No, brilliant, thank you. Looking around the table, I've got Peter.
Yes, I mean, I support the recommendation, so this is a quick one. Again, RCC, a big thing with procurement with shared services. I think perhaps we need to get the eye on the ball in the future. We made big savings strangely on insurance by six councils getting together. Gave a lot of buying power, and we made some big savings. The audit, RCC with the host, but again, big savings. We did our own, had our own team, contractors and so on, so just.
That's a good idea.
And I've worked on this report, I said it before, Tracy, that we're going in the right direction because I'm more blunt, the way contracts have been handled at this council over the years. Sorry, have been appalling, and I'm glad that we're starting to recognise that. I have one addition, which you wouldn't have known because you weren't on the council at the time, but unfortunately, even though we're leaving Europe, we still have to follow European law. And the clerk mentioned that some of our contracts, which we haven't been doing, we are obliged to advertise on, I don't remember, Pacific websites because of that law, which we haven't. And it'll be things like Plantscape, things like the grounds maintenance contract, because they're over.
I believe it's a portal.
Yeah, which then we would then get tenders, because these big organisations know that's where you go for money.
I have heard of the portals, but I don't know enough.
No.
About local authority portals, I only know.
If you, if it's helpful, if I can pass on some advice, it might be helpful to go to the contracts people well in partnership through Rutland County Council, who prepare contracts for them, they would be able to give you the advice required. I'm not happy with the recommendation that AA Cleaning gets a further six months. They, I won't repeat how they got their contract and how it was poorly handled. But what I will repeat, and it's quite clear immediately, is that once they did get their contract, they were allowed to change it, to suit them. They haven't even stuck to. Yes, it's really, it came back to council, and they changed the opening hours. They changed the opening hours after their contract was appointed.
Okay, right.
And I spent time over a week monitoring, standing outside at the church, watching clean and not even turning up and replacing toilet rations.
Right, just, let's just.
Back to that, going through them and looking at the timeframes, we haven't got enough time to do it properly. They've not even been advertised, so this contract has not even been, it's not in the public domain at all.
I'm not moaning at you, I'm moaning at myself.
So I've gone for the less riskier option, which is not suitable, I agree, you know.
It's the best of the bad.
It's the best of a bad situation.
Proposal from Michael Hayley is.
I propose a regulation that's stated, acceptable.
I'm abstaining.
Were you on to standing on that?
I was.
I was just about to say, in view of the timescales that are already down, I propose this in full.
Well, proposal by Michael Hayley was seconded by Joyce. All those in favour? Martin, are you against or abstaining?
Can I just have the thing that.
Look, for you, you're against or abstaining now?
Yeah, but I was, I did ask that advice was support on the European laws and this website policy. And I just want that acknowledged, and then I will support.
Can you put down its carrier? Councillor Brooks has refused to vote, and then we'll move on. Thank you.
No, I haven't.
Will you, Martin, when you're asked to vote, and it's our group, if you continually keep talking or ignoring the chairman, you're breaching code of conduct. If you do it again this meeting, I will exclude you. Okay, let's move on.
Chairman, can I just say that.
No, we're moving on. If you keep talking, right, last warning, if you continue talking while I'm talking, you'll be excluded, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You can stop sending me your nasty emails.
From the table, I'm now proposing that councillor Brooks is excluded from the meeting for disrupting it. Can I have a second to put that, please? Councillor Stubs, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, all those against? One, all those abstaining? One, two, three, I think so, is carried. Martin, can you please place that?
No, I'm not leaving, you protest me.
Right, the meeting is postponed at seventeen. Nineteen, twenty seventeen, the meeting is postponed, whilst councillor Brooks decides if he's going to leave the meeting.
He's not going to leave the meeting.
What we'll do then is, I will ask the council if they want to relocate to a new location, and the only location they've got is the office. The council wants to relocate to the office.
We've got some important things to do, and I've been quite caught up during that point.
Okay, your support's not going. If you're not going to leave, then we will move on.
Can we just, you didn't give me a chance of what was standing.